First, we'll have the invocation and Sister Esther Hogan from the Sisters of Most Precious Blood of O'Fallon is here to lead us in that. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by John White.
Loving God, we ask for your guidance and direction as we come together to meet this evening. Grant us the strength to manage the challenges ahead and the wisdom to identify these as opportunities as we strive to serve the members of St. Charles County Council. As we make decisions on behalf of the council, grant us the gift of an open mind, the willingness to learn, and the humility to accept the ideas of others. Help us to recognize diversity as a blessing and the unity as our strength. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. And the pledge?
I collect the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sister Hogan, thank you very much for coming and sharing those words with us tonight. That sets us on the right tone for the meeting. Next, we have the roll call.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Okay, and we have public comments. This is the time when anybody that's with us tonight would like to talk about anything that is related to St. Charles County and St. Charles County business. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment? Mr. Dinoff?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. A.C. Dinoff, county resident. In District Three, District Three, there's no incumbent, and so I feel that the people of District Three should really step up and file for filing of office. Filing has begun at our county election authority, and this seat was vacated by Mrs. Matheny and is an open seat at the election to be voted on in April for the primary. And I'm encouraging citizens to file at the election authority at 379 Turner Boulevard. Just so you know, the confines of County Council District Number Three, to the north, it takes in mid-O'Fallon, south-O'Fallon, western Dartian Prairie, Codleville, southwestern St. Peter's City, and Weldon Springs. To the north, the dividing line is just south of Laurel Hill Road, and to the east is Mid Rivers Mall Drive, Pittman Hill Road; to the south is the Missouri River; and to the west is Bates Henning, Weldon Springs, and Technology Drive. So if anybody's interested in running for county council, I'd encourage you to file before March 25th at 5:00 p.m. at the county election authority. The salary is, I believe, $15,000 plus medical benefits and a life insurance policy. Also, I put on your desk, in reference to the approval bid to the election authority for the delivery of services of the election equipment, in the amount of $43,000. This bid needs to be tabled under the following legitimate questions and until proper documents are answered and supplied to the county council and the public by the finance director and the election authority director. I have many questions about why is there only one single bid? I called several of the companies on the list, and it says bids not received. Well, they were never notified by St. Charles County that the bid was even available. Where is the contract? It's not attached to the supporting documents. We're running a business here, not a shady-type operation. Where is the insurance information? What about the workers' compensation insurance? In last year's company, one of the workers fell off the back of the U-Haul pickup truck and was severely injured themselves, with the county now being on the liability and on a lawsuit hook here that's currently ongoing. Where is the security bond for the company and its workers? Are there criminal background checks being conducted through both the Metro Regis Service, the State Highway Patrol Mule Service, and the National Crime Database? Are we making sure that all drivers have a valid Missouri driver's license, which was not the case last year? Why is the bid as filed not attached to the supporting documents? Who has control of the keys to the various election polling sites throughout the county? We're talking about schools, childcare facilities, senior citizen homes, churches, et cetera. Why are we giving building alarm codes to those contracted employees? Where are the department policies and procedures that Mr. Krismer promised? And why aren't we doing this in-house, as Mr. Schnarr and Kurt, the purchasing director, made it affordable for the county to take it in-house? I ask you to table this and look at and answer the questions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council tonight? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next part, which is, we were going to have a report from the county executive, but I understand you won't wait until the next meeting for that. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion at this time to move Bill Number 4059 forward on the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion been made. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, we have procedural issues or steps that we need to go through. First, let's read it.
Bill Number 4059, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement amending the contract authorized by Ordinance 09-072 with the St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation District for the purpose of providing certain services to the county.
Is there a motion to amend by substitution?
I'd move to amend Bill 4059 by substituting with substitute Bill 4059.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? There's a second? Call?
Austin.
Roll call? No, I'm sorry, not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Okay, so we now have amended Bill 4059 to the substitute Bill 4059. Next thing we need to do is to divide the question according to Roberts Rule Number 27. Mr. Ehlum?
To provide for separate actions to approve for each of the three contracts to be authorized by substitute Bill 4059 and to provide for approval of the contract with Northeast Community Action Corporation, or NICAC, by the council as public housing authority, including tenant member Ms. Sally Winters, I move to divide the question of approving substitute Bill 4059 into three questions. Approval of the contract with Northeast Community Action Corporation, or NICAC, as provided in Sections 4 through 6 and 10 of the substitute bill. Approval of the agreement with the Soil and Water Conservation District is provided in Section 1 through 3 and 10 of the substitute bill. And approval of the agreement with St. Charles County Community College is provided in Section 7 through 10 of the substitute bill.
Thanks for that motion, Mike. Is there a second to the motion to divide the question? Thank you, John. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, so we have now divided it into three separate parts. At this time, I'll invite Ms. Sally Winters to the dais. Sally is the tenant member for the first part, the first part of the bill dealing with the Northeast Community Action Corporation, or NICAC. So Sally?
Thank you very much.
Sally's role in this is that she will actually be voting with us also on the first part of this, Section A, the approval for the NICAC part. We will now call the question, the NICAC question. Mike?
So I move to approve the contract with Northeast Community Action Corporation, or NICAC, as provided in Section 4 through 6 and 10 of the substitute bill for NICAC to act as the county's agent in managing housing choice vouchers assigned to the St. Charles County Housing Assistance Program.
Okay. I'm sorry, I've moved a little bit too fast. Does anybody have any questions regarding this particular contract? Mr. Cronin?
Why do we have three different contracts with three different agencies on one bill? Just curious.
Yep.
Question for the administration.
I think that in this particular instance, we were unaware when we did the introduction at the second meeting in February that the NICAC contract had in fact run out last December 31st, so of 13. And so in order to put that back into place, as is required by our administrative plan with HUD, we went ahead and tied it to that bill. On the other one, I can't answer you. Do you know what the?
Harold, I'm going to turn on that one.
Harold, on the third issue that got added?
The third issue was the community college, and that one was added also at the request of the administration, but again because of contract years and the need to have contracts in place.
In short, this is a housecleaning matter to extend three contracts with three different entities, and we do, and we're getting it done with one bill.
Actually, that's correct. All of them are reiterations of earlier contract arrangements with these three entities.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions before we vote on the first question?
Do you have a second, Chairman?
Was there a, I'm sorry, was there a second to approve the contract with NICAC?
Make a second.
Second's been made. Do we need a roll call for this or on separate, when we break it out separately? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on just the first part.
And the first part is the approval of the contract with Northeast Community Action Corporation, or NICAC. Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
And Ms. Sally Winters.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Winters, your part in this is completed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate you coming out tonight for this part. Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move on to the second part. Is there a motion to approve the agreement with the Soil and Water Conservation District?
I'd move to approve the agreement with the Soil and Water Conservation District as provided in Section 1 through 3 and 10 of the substitute bill for the purpose of providing services to the county.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that particular part? Seeing none?
Second.
There's a second?
John.
Okay. Motion's been seconded. Roll call vote, please.
And this is to approve the Soil and Water Conservation District. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Okay, and then the third part, which is the agreement with St. Charles Community College.
I move to approve the agreement with St. Charles County Community College as provided in Section 7 through 10 of the substitute bill for the provision of services provided by the Next Generation Career Center.
Is there a second to that? Thank you, Dave. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any questions or comments about this particular agreement? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go back to the agenda then. We're up to the consent agenda. Is there any part of the consent agenda people would like to pull off for separate discussion?
I would like to pull off the election moving equipment, please.
Okay. We will discuss that separately then. Anybody else have anything that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the remainder portion of the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Cronin, you have the floor on the contract for the delivery services for the election authority.
Since there was not a contract attached to this bill, okay, I would like to know some of the questions that were brought up in public comments. Since we had some damage to equipment, I think last year, election equipment with a different vendor, is this vendor insured and liable for any damages to brand-new election equipment? And since this vendor will also have access to a lot of public buildings, like elementary schools and the like, I think this is vendor doing background checks for the security of those children. And I do not see that in the contract whatsoever, and my questions is, is the county covered that, okay? And these types of questions.
Councilman, you know, as you know, this is an election bid, and I don't know the details of how Mr. Krismer gets his election equipment folks in and out of the buildings. It's purely his, under his control. Now, you know, we can find those things out for you. The first election for which he is asking for this is the April election, so that would still give us eight days from the next, from the next council meeting.
And no disrespect to Mr. Krismer, but he is not an attorney, and my question is, are we covered for liability, both to others from this company's employees and for damages to a million dollars-plus worth of new election equipment? And I understand the situation, but the same token is, I don't think we want another lawsuit involved in the election party, okay? And I think, okay? Maybe we need to find out this kind of, is anyone from county staff visited this contract at all?
Have you seen his final contract, Mr. Schnarr?
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, the only reason would be is if he shared it with finance, because otherwise we haven't seen it unless he shared it with the county staff.
I would like to make a motion to table this pending review of this contract with the election authority by county staff attorneys.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That one's, we'll discuss at the March 31st meeting. Next on the agenda, we have the discussion of the fleet of trucks that we needed to purchase. Mr. Cronin, have you, did you get all the answers?
Yes, Mr. Schnarr was very nice to find out the information. We are paying a dollar less, and they're delivering the trucks, so the mileage will be incurred on the 250-mile journey from Springfield to here. So I'd like to make a motion that the public truck could get put back on the consent agenda, and so be it.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and we'll talk about that one on the 31st also then. Okay, Bill's?
No, it's done.
It's done now. I'm sorry. We don't need to talk about it. It's just, that was on the consent agenda. You're right. Bills for final passage, we've already taken care of Bill 4059, so that's Bill 4060.
Bill Number 4060, an ordinance authorizing the county executive and sheriff to execute two intergovernmental agreements relating to combating human trafficking, including one, a memorandum of understanding with the United States Attorney's Office, St. Louis County, and others, and two, an agreement with St. Louis County to provide a detective to the Human Trafficking Task Force and authorizing the receipt of funds in an amount up to $69,219 for reimbursement of salary and benefits of that detective through a grant award to St. Louis County under the Enhanced Collaborative Model to Combat Human Trafficking, CFDA Number 16.320, and further by amending Budget Ordinance 13-092 by creating a new revenue line item and supplemental appropriations within the 2014 Sheriff's Department budget, and further amending Ordinance 13-092 relating to a position within the Sheriff's Department Criminal Investigations Division.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from the councilmembers? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive and sheriff to execute two intergovernmental agreements relating to combating human trafficking, including one, a memorandum of understanding with the United States Attorney's Office, St. Louis County, and others, and two, an agreement with St. Louis County to provide a detective to the Human Trafficking Task Force and authorizing the receipt of funds in an amount up to $69,219 for reimbursement of salary and benefits of that detective through a grant award to St. Louis County under the Enhanced Collaborative Model to Combat Human Trafficking, CFDA Number 16.320, and further by amending Budget Ordinance 13-092 by creating a new revenue line item and supplemental appropriations within the 2014 Sheriff's Department budget, and further amending Ordinance 13-092 relating to a position within the Sheriff's Department Criminal Investigations Division. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have bills for introduction. Want to go ahead? We've got a long list tonight.
Bill Number 4061, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance granting conditional use permit 21587 for a general contracting service to Donald Frederick Paling Trust and Joyce K. Paling Trust.
Questions or comments from the council? Yes, Dave.
I just wanted to let you all know that the Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval, 9-0 vote for approval of this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next one, please.
Bill Number 4062, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District, five acres minimum lot size, to C2 General Commercial District as per application 21793.
Is there any questions or comments from council? Joe?
You go ahead, Joe.
Do you want to?
I was just going to, I was just going to say that the Planning Zoning Commission also recommended approval, 9-0, for this bill.
Thank you, Dave. Joe?
On this piece here, is Wayne here?
Yep.
Wayne, sorry. Some questions? How you doing, sir?
Wonderful.
What's the master plan on this, in this, on this corner? What's the master plan call-out? Is it saying here?
Yes, it does.
It says the, doesn't say that, it doesn't say, it says, it mentions the master plan, but it didn't say that it follows the master plan. On page 2, section 3. And in that area.
The master plan for this area was indicating that it should be, I believe, residential and was not proposing to support a commercial type of zoning. However, it's important to note, if I've got my right property here, is that across the street from this parcel is already Zone C2, so that complicates the matter as far as what the potentials really are for this piece, because the master plan has not been followed as it relates to the zoning in that corridor. So while the master plan doesn't support the zoning, surrounding zoning probably creates a, an opportunity for this property to be considered for rezoning.
The property across the street is a proposed nursery, isn't it?
Yes, you're correct.
Technically agriculture.
This property is Zone C2 across the street.
But a nursery is agriculture, right?
A nursery could be in agricultural type of use.
Yeah, I just, I just think that this is, isn't storage, this seems more industrial than commercial, because isn't the second, 4063 correlates with this bill as well, right?
Yes, both of those bills, 62 and 63, deal with the same piece of property. One zones it from its current zoning to C2, and the other bill gives it or grants a conditional use permit for an outdoor storage lot for RVs and trailers and things like that.
I'm just not sure that this, this just seems like not a very good use for the corner there, putting a bunch of trailers and campers on the, in the corner. I'm sorry.
Joe, you know, we've talked about this at planning zoning, and one of the things that we did ask for is that they have a site-proof fence, and the big thing is that that particular area, I can't imagine anybody ever building a house there now or in the future because of all the traffic that's at that intersection and will continue to grow as the county develops that, that direction. And so we saw it as a transitional, good transitional use for now. At some point, it definitely would be something I would see as being commercial, especially when there's something across the street and the traffic, the high traffic that goes through that area.
Well, I mean, being the people next door, I want to be considered transition, because there's, you know, it's agriculture, and there's nothing but residences over there. I would see, I agree with you to some degree, Dave, but I think that it seems to me that it's a good spot for a future, you know, I don't know, gas station or something like that, but storing a bunch of trailers on the corner there, I certainly wouldn't want anything like that next to my house. And there's nothing like that in the area. That's why I think it's a, I don't think this is a good use of the property at all. I mean, I really don't. This is, I don't even know if the nursery, I remember that guy that came in, I don't even know if he put it in yet across the street, but it is all agriculture there. That's, you know, I mean, we got another couple of weeks to think about it.
David, do you have any other questions? Sorry, didn't want to cut you off. David, at P&amp;Z, was there any, anybody from the neighborhoods there to speak either in favor or opposition to the?
No, there wasn't. Nobody from the public, and really, the houses that are located there are pretty far a distance from that location.
Okay. But Mr. Brazel's correct, that this particular issue will be up for vote on the 31st, so if there's additional information or questions that we need to look at, we'll have the next two weeks or three weeks, actually, I guess, to talk about that.
The only thing is, typically, Dave, you see these, I know what you mean by transitional commercial property, but a lot of times you see these trailer storage, either a button like on highway N, a button more commercial, you know, in groups of commercial. That's what really concerns me. You're going to have the six acres of nothing but trailers in the middle of Ag. I just think it's going to look horrible. That's all. It's like spot zoning, you know? It's like, I don't know.
I guess the only thing that I have a, I was supportive of it because it's commercial right across the street, and that was why I asked for them to put up the site-proof fence for the facility, so it's not an eyesore, but.
Okay. Mr. Cronin?
For what it's worth, I live in a rural area, and I have one of those a field behind my house, and it doesn't even have a site-proof, a site-proof fence or whatever, and I can tell it's a pretty good neighborhood. They don't play music late at night, I don't hear shotguns going off, they're just going to go out. So for what it's worth, as a rural area, that's, I do like what Planning Zoning did. I read the report requiring a site-proof fence, and I think there was some additional learning and whatnot to make that a less stressful neighborhood. So the full report's got a lot of good input in there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
One of the points to make about this is that, you know, this council voted to get unsightly RVs on private property, and would make it difficult for places where people to go store their RVs. So it's kind of a two-edged sword, you know? Here it says you can't store it at home, but we make it harder for them places to open up and allow people to store at facilities like this. So it's another thing to consider.
Good point. Thank you, John. I can't, I haven't been able to determine exactly how large is that truck and trailer parking area.
The total site is almost seven acres, and I believe the portion that they want to use is about half that size.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else on this particular one? We'll address it again on the 31st. The next one, please.
Bill Number 4063, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance granting conditional use permit 21793 for auto, boat, tr- conditional use permit 21793 for auto, boat, truck, and RV storage to WWGLC.
Obviously, we'll take that up at the same time. Bill number 4064?
Bill number 4064, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial District as per application 21798.
Any, Mr. Cronin?
Yes, I know this applicant. He is a plumbing company guy out of O'Fallon, has been there for, I think, going on the third generation. They're a very good business that got kind of pushed out of O'Fallon by the expansion of Walmart, because they used to be located right behind Walmart. Where they're moving to is a pole barn up on Highway W, a rural area near Lincoln County. The neighbors are supportive of it, and I think it's a good way to retain a good local business in this county. I'd like to see this approved.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Any other comments or questions about it? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next bill.
Bill number 4065, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Community Council of St. Charles County for professional services to assist St. Charles County in Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Consolidated Planning and Reporting, and to assist St. Charles County's Community Assistance Board in awarding grants to agencies that address homelessness in the county.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one.
Bill number 4066, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute Surface Transportation Program Agreement, Federal Project STP-7302657, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $144,000 for a two-inch asphalt overlay and ADA improvements on Patriotic Trail in Walden Spring.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Just one quick comment. You might note here that we had a full-blown discussion in the last year and a half or so about our assistance to small cities relative to their maintenance of their streets. I think this is a good indication of how we're providing that professional assistance to those smaller communities by making application with East West Gateway and assisting with the small staff that they have. And I think we're providing a very good service to them.
That's a good point. Thanks, thanks, Don. We appreciate that. Next, next bill, please.
Bill number 4067, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for installation of various safety improvements at an existing at-grade railroad crossing on Carmel Lakeview Road.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next one, please.
Bill number 4068, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute Surface Transportation Program Agreement, Federal Project STP-7302655, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible cost, up to a maximum amount of $272,000 for a thin bonded overlay on Route N in Cowanville.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go on to the next one, please.
Bill number 4069, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute Surface Transportation Program Agreement, Federal Project STP-7302654, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds up to 80% of the eligible cost, up to a maximum amount of $132,000 for micro-surfacing on Independence Road and Wolfram Road in Walden Spring.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next one, please.
Bill number 4070, requested by John Gryssus, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving a third amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Charles for the extension of West Clay.
Okay. Hopefully, that'll be the last one of those. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next one.
Bill number 4071, requested by-
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, is this what this one, okay. Is this, okay, that's fine, John. All right, that's fine.
Thank you, Joe. Next one, please, Carol.
Bill number 4071, requested by Michelle McBride, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Charles for collection of water service line repair fee.
Okay, and that one's very similar to the sewer lines insurance programs that St. Charles and St. Peters, I believe some of the other cities do. It just extends that same concept to water lines. Any?
I have a question on Michelle McBride. I'd like to, like, pose, please.
Yes.
I read the, and it seems, I think we've had just a discussion before, it's 12 bucks a year, a dollar a month. Wouldn't it be easier for, to tag that on to the water bill? And that's, so that, that'd be one question. The other thing is, the county collects 2.1% from what I read for collecting it. You come out whole, collecting that for 2.1%? Or is this a revenue drain or a revenue plus for the county?
It's a revenue plus for the county. It's also a statutory provision. I'm not quite sure we could deny it. We could deny it because it's contractual, contractual. However, since we do the other things for the city, and since we collect St. Peters' water line fee, I think that would put us in a very bad light.
Okay. But it doesn't, it's not caution your office anything to do with?
No, it's, it's, we set a flag, we run a file, there it goes.
Okay. I have no, no issue with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, next bill, please.
Bill number 4072, requested by Steve Almond and Tom Mears, sponsored by John White, an ordinance relating to the standard for use of cellular location equipment.
That's one that I, we'll look, look forward to more discussion at the next meeting. I'm not exactly sure what all that does. John, are you familiar with this, or?
None of them discussed it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, would you like me to talk about it?
Yeah, Steve, if you'd-
Yeah, this is, Mr. White and I are on the East West Gateway Board, and last, two weeks ago, I think, the board approved a purchase of equipment that will be on a mobile truck. And what it can do is that it can, can't listen to telephone conversations, but it can identify where someone is if we know their telephone number. So obviously, it'd be very helpful in finding stolen cell phones, be very helpful in finding people, finding bad guys. But because it has the potential to be abused, the sheriff, and, you know, we've already talked to the sheriff, and he already has a policy that he would not use this unless he had a warrant from a judge. And so all we're doing is taking what's already his policy, putting it in an ordinance, and just reassuring anyone who looks at that and says, you know, what's going on here? Because it is a very, and the sheriff can talk to the, the benefits of it. I mean, it's something we need to have. It's just, especially with everything's been going on the last year. We just want everybody to be assured that, that, you know, this is gonna be used only if we can convince a judge that there's probable cause, or if it's an exigent circumstance. And Joanne, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if it, an exigent circumstance is where you don't have time to go get a warrant and you use it, then you have to prove to the judge that, you know, you were deserving of that, and if you don't, the evidence you use will get thrown out. The other, the other reason we're doing, there's a, there's a bill going through Jeff City right now, actually, Robert Cornejo, who's a representative from St. Charles, is sponsoring the bill. And he wants to do this statewide. I've talked to him about it. He says the police chiefs and law enforcement is generally supportive. This is something they, I know the City of St. Louis, I've talked to their chief, they, they have the same policy as the sheriff. But there's just a lot of concern right now about privacy issues, and I just think this would be a good thing. It may end up in the law after August 28th. It's already a policy. I just think it'd be good for the council and myself to make a statement here, that this is the way, think it ought, think it ought to be done.
Does it also be used if, with all these Amber Alerts that we've had recently?
I'm gonna let the sheriff answer that if he, if he can.
Could the same powers or tool be used to help locate that?
That is a tool that could be used under those circumstances, and obviously, that would be one of those exigent circumstances. It can also be used to track lost persons, which is what one of the biggest uses of cell phones is as far as law enforcement today, is locating lost persons. So there, there's a multitude of uses for it, but there are a couple of things we need to look at, too, that will not hinder the law enforcement's ability to do their job, but yet not cross the constitutional lines.
Sounds good. I'm glad we're, we're supporting this. Yes?
My youngest son is a student at SLU, so I'm pretty familiar with the Megan Boken case, and you guys might have seen a lot of that in the paper. But equipment like this might have saved that lady's, that young lady's life. She got killed, shot for her cellphone by some guys that were robbing people of cellphones in downtown St. Louis. And equipment like this can really save lives in situations like this. And, and that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about eavesdropping on anybody. We're talking about letting the sheriff use equipment provided by East West Gateway to save lives in this county. I think it's a great thing you're doing, Sheriff.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. Anybody else?
Thank you. And if anybody has any other questions between now and the next meeting, I'm sure the sheriff and definitely our staff would be available to try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Steve. Bill number 4073, please.
Bill number 4073, requested by Tom Mears, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance amending Article II, Section 200.050 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri OSCCMO, concerning registration fees from a qualified instructor.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one. I'm sorry, Mr. Brazel.
Are the qualifications of the, of the instructor in here? Is this Tom's or what? Tom, do you have the definition of the qualifications of an instructor in the ordinance?
Yes, they're in the state statute, and they have to be provided by the instructor. The instructor pays a $10 fee for registering with the county in which he resides. Or he doesn't have to register at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill 4074?
Bill number 4074, requested by John Gryssus, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Cowanville for the extension of Main Street between Chestnut Street and Oak Street.
Questions or comments? I don't see any. Move on to 4075.
Bill number 4075, requested by Bob Schnarr, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the non-binding projected tax rates of the county for the General Revenue Fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2014, in order to develop the notice of projected tax liability to accompany the assessor's notice of assessed value, all as mandated by Senate Bill 711.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, these are all the exact same rates as are in existence.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Joanne. Is there any activity on the table bills? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Cronin?
I'll forward it to you, the review prior to the next meeting, but on Resolution 13-17, just a few days ago, the EPA and our congressional delegation from St. Louis did request that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers step in to take a look at the Westlake Bridgerton landfill fire radioactive waste. I'll get you, I have a copy of that letter coming, and I will get copies of that with you along with some background information. As such, the EPA and our congressman in St. Louis County are all, all on board with getting a recommendation to corps, take a look at this waste. I think the county should look at getting on board, and I would like to get the information to you folks and probably get this where we can either discuss it or pass it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Anybody else have any announcements or miscellaneous items?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I think there was some confusion because of a public comment. There is most certainly an incumbent sitting in District 3, which includes any duly authorized and sworn member of the council, so that is certainly an incumbency.
You mean I exist? You do exist. You're not a figment of our imagination.
Ghost.
Is there?
Just remember, everybody, it's Cowanville, St. Patty's Day parade this Saturday. Steve, our very own Steve, is a grand pooper. It ain't time this time, it's Steve. He's the parade marshal.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it's a great parade. You guys need to go to it. Good time.
All right. Anybody have anything else, or is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.